...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today is Monday, February 1st, 2016, nine at seven PM. And the director of the main of Greensburg City Council is called to the room. At this time, please silence electronic devices. Rock call, please.
Mayor DeMianus.
Yes.
Mayor Cavington.
Here.
Kevin Fleetwood.
Here.
Diana McKenzie.
Here.
Daryl Holley.
Here.
Jamie Kay.
Here.
Now, uh, there, we've got a copy of the January 4th and January 25th minutes. Uh, the special meeting was the 25th, and the fourth was the director of the main. Is there any corrections to the events?
On, uh, Jeff Smith says for availability pursuers, I think, for availability fees pursuers.
Jeff? Just talking about fees instead of...
It's a connection fee, yeah, for availability.
Okay. Any other corrections? Okay, so if there's any more corrections at this time, uh, this can make them approved.
Make the motion approved as amended.
Okay, thanks. Second. Second. Need a, uh, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Close. Okay, also in the packet, there should have been amendment to the council meeting on December the 7th, 2015. There's only two council people available, because they was on the council at that time. Is it in your packet, guys, or is this...
Um, yeah, December 7th.
Yes. The sign.
Sign. A motion to approve.
Yes, please.
A motion to approve. Second.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Thanks. Okay, old business. We had the fund request discussion, and...
What about the minutes of January 25th?
Uh, we did those already first.
We did those, those on January 25th.
Oh, well, I'm scared.
Well, we'll talk.
Good, we could do that, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Funding request discussion that we had on the January 25th with the special meeting, uh, that you want to discuss on that, but we can start down the line and build with what I got, and, uh, as we go along. The request funding for the Greensburg schools from Mr. Hunter was five thousand dollars. In discussion.
I can't even say the same thing every year. It's a, it's a great deal to the city. See, no reason not to fund it. I will make the motion to, uh, move forward and give them five thousand dollars out of the Riverboat Fund.
Okay.
I would second that.
Okay, second. Any discussion anymore? Uh, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Close. So we're gonna give five thousand to the school. Uh, next, we have Big Brothers, Big Sisters. Uh, they were, amount of question is ten thousand. Any discussion?
Just a few points, I guess, to, to bring up. One, we gave them seventy-five hundred last year, um, so this, they're asking for an increase. I think they asked for ten last year, and we only gave them seventy-five. Uh, just a few things to consider is, you know, the county supports them with a donation of forty-eight hundred dollars. Something to consider with this is that they paid their rent, basically. Consider with that, though, is the population of the city makes up about half the county, maybe not quite half, but about half the county. So, half of that is coming from people that live within the city limits, half of that's coming from people that live outside the city limits, because we all pay county taxes if we live in the city. So, to add an additional, you know, ten thousand dollars, I, I think is, you know, you're asking an awful lot for, for the city to pay for those things. I think that money is well spent, better spent, if we take the time to plan out our future infrastructure needs, such as roads, sewer lines, water lines. We, we need to sit down and come up with a long-term plan to put ourselves in a good shape with those, and I, I think that's something that's not gonna be easy. It's gonna take a lot of money, and to give money away like this every year, I just, I can't justify it. I think there is money there that can be spent like that, yeah, but we could also better spend that money, I feel, investing it in our streets, our sewer lines, our water lines, and then allow the community to support those organizations. My two cents. And, uh, I, I will say I respect Jamie's opinion of, and we talk about this every year. And, uh, I respect Jamie because he stands on these principles and, uh, and he has a way. Uh, I understand where he's coming from. That being said, what makes us a great institution is that we don't all agree. I think what we have before us tonight, uh, you can divide maybe in, in a couple of different directions. You have the EDC in the Main Street, uh, the Learning Center. I think those three you can look at as economic development, uh, and the city should be. I, I feel we have a responsibility there. You take the other three, the Big Brothers, the Catch a Ride, the, uh, New Directions, uh, the Bread of Life, I guess there's four. I, I, I think that just, it, it adds, uh, quality to our city, and, uh, I have supported in the past to, uh, fund these organizations, and, uh, I again, this year will support, uh, funding these organizations just because it, it's helping others in making, uh, Greensburg a better quality city.
I, I would echo what Mr. Poling said. Uh, like, like Mr. Kay, and I, I want to make sure that we're using our monies responsibly, and I've heard him talk about this before, and really took that hard, thought about it, uh, particularly the Big Brothers, New Directions, and, uh, Bread of Life. It's about forty-five thousand dollars what they're requesting, and out of all the money that the city spends every year, it represents about one percent of all funds. And I think that is a, somebody who wants to be fiscally, fiscally responsible, that, that's an amount that I can justify in my mind to form those partnerships with nonprofits in the community. What I would like for us to, this is a discussion probably for another day, is in the future perhaps, put a, a ceiling on the amount that we would want to set aside for nonprofits, if we're gonna set aside money for nonprofits. I, I know we already talked about the schools. I, I don't see why the, we don't just budget that each year. I think that's something we're probably always gonna support, and I agree with Mr. Poling as well, that the EDC, Main Street, and the, uh, Learning Center, I would include in Catch a Ride, uh, or related economic development, exactly the kind of monies that should be spent. So I would support, uh, the request that...
I have a question on the, uh, New Directions, Mr. Kay. I don't think there's any more here. Well, as far as discovering, did anybody besides me recall the fact that she said something about there was someone that was getting assistance at the start of her birthday here? Did that seem odd?
And she said the longest they've supported somebody through the system was after three years. That's what I recall, maybe that's...
I, I don't know a whole lot about the organization, so, but I thought that supporting one person for three years, I felt like...
Did she say to what degree this work was...
No, and that's what I wanted to ask. I didn't know, I mean, I just, I don't know. Assist herself in a situation time to time again, and help time to time again, and, so I was just concerned about that. I didn't know if I was the only one who thought that, or if I was taking out tax or what it was, you know.
I think that's a valid concern, but, uh, again, without knowing, I mean, it could be as much as counseling, or it could be putting a roof over their head.
Should we play this?
I mean, I see Jamie's point, we have a lot of issues facing the city from, from streets, sewer, water lines, and so forth. These organizations put a lot of their heart and soul into the things they do, and, uh, I think towards more right now, towards, uh, the pair, that, uh, they do need to be supported, and, uh, and I think that, uh, to the citizens of Greensburg, who take advantage of those services to support them.
Okay, let's go back to Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and how much we're wanting to spend, or donate, if you say possible. Uh, they're asking for ten thousand.
I believe the request last year was for ten as well, but we ended up giving them seventy-five. They did not say that there were more in the program this year. They got quite an addition from the county, but, uh, there was no increase in county. Likewise, they're only requesting forty-eight hundred from the county, and that's to help pay for rent. The other side of the, I, I, I hear what everybody's saying, but part of this is, you know, year after year after year, you've got some of the same organizations coming back, and, you know, I don't know, it's, you know, one of the things you'd expect to see is, how are we gonna change our fundraising to make it different, or to improve it, or, you know, not just hope? I, I think we even had one, one organization, Bread of Life, said, "Well, we're gonna run on faith and hope that it happens." Right? You, you need to run on faith and hope things happen, but you need a plan for those things to ensure that it can happen as well. I mean, that's the one thing that stuck out in my mind, when I get that comment.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know what I'm asking.
Thanks. Well, I didn't, I didn't know if you wanted to go to the seventy-five hundred, what we had last year, we're giving the ten.
I'll move things along, because did you have some...
Well, I'm not inclined to give them the ten, but anything I would say, I think no more than seventy-five hundred. The thing that bothered me about, about their request was that they've already budgeted a pretty significant deficit of sixty-five hundred, a couple of years. And when I look at the, I remember asking them, you know, what could this extra money do for you? And they said, "You know, perhaps give them more scholarships," or something like that, but when I look at what they budgeted, they only, right, they only give a thousand dollars in scholarship, which is just such a tiny, a tiny part of their budget. I don't know, didn't pick them too much, but I don't, I personally don't feel comfortable giving them.
Also, they did have a couple other, um, like mandatory fees that they gotta pay for, maybe one of my big patients, something in the state.
Yeah, it was a new...
They were qualified, they knew something new that they had to...
Yeah, I think it was to do background checks, is that right?
And that was for like, for the two of those that come out to, like, forty-eight hundred, something like that.
Anyone here from, uh, Big Brothers? Can you shine a, a little bit of light on that?
Yes, since I'm the only board member here, I am board member with Big Brothers, Big Sisters. Um, currently, we have purchased a computer program from the National Program of Big Brothers, Big Sisters, in order to run the program here. Uh, it's a program I knew they put off for a couple of years, hoping that it's only meant, um, asked if you would do it, but not recommended, but now they actually happen to have it in order to run regular programs in their office. Does that help with that?
That's a made annual expense, or what?
Uh, it's my understanding that it will be an annual expense to run the program.
I wrote down the annual next to, that was four thousand dollars.
Four thousand, right.
And that's, you didn't pay, you didn't pay for that last year, right? You had that expense last year, isn't my question?
Right, as of last year, it wasn't an absolute requirement that the program had to have in order to stay as a national affiliated member. As of this year, it is now.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion on the Big Brothers, Big Sisters?
Well, with the extra expense, I'm inclined to give them ten thousand dollars, so I will make that motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, I got a second. So we got a ten thousand dollar donation to Big Brothers, Big Sisters. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Close.
Aye.
Okay. That one fell down. Not on council, where are we at now?
I'd move to allocate seventy-five hundred dollars from the Riverboat.
You have a second? One second, okay.
May I have a roll call vote, please, Mayor?
Sure. Uh, roll call vote nationally for the seventy-five hundred for Big Brothers, Big Sisters.
Mayor Covington.
Aye.
Kevin Fleetwood.
Aye.
Diana McKenzie.
Aye.
Daryl Holley.
Counselor, if we vote this down, we have another motion after this.
Motion to pay, sure.
Nay.
Jamie Kay.
Nay.
Okay, well, that seventy-five hundred, motion did not pass.
I'll make a motion for eight thousand dollars.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Mayor Covington.
Aye.
Kevin Fleetwood.
Aye.
Diana McKenzie.
Aye.
Daryl Holley.
Aye.
Jamie Kay.
Nay.
Okay. Motion will carry. Four to one. Okay, let's go Catch a Ride Lifetime, uh, resources. They have five thousand down, Lifetime.
I'll make a motion to put the five thousand for Catch a Ride.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote for five thousand to Catch a Ride.
Mayor Covington.
Aye.
Kevin Fleetwood.
Aye.
Diana McKenzie.
Aye.
Daryl Holley.
Aye.
Jamie Kay.
Nay.
Okay, motion passed.
Point, point of the case, where's that?
That comes out of that, yes.
That's what they have down. New Directions, requesting twenty thousand, so I have a motion. Discussion? I'll tell you what, I'm gonna say something about the New Directions. The problem that I have is basically it's, it's a tool that the police department uses quite a bit to help them to get ladies out of, out of harm's way, or families. Uh, I think it's really important that we kinda support this group for the fact that we have them here. We used to have to take them to Columbus, Indiana, and once we took them to Columbus, then they had to drive back, so our officers were basically out of town if they had to do that, or, or someone had taken them to Columbus. So that was the shelter that used to be there, was at, was at Columbus. Now we're fortunate enough that we have one here. I would like to say it's supported, uh, uh, I, I just think it's part of the police department.
That said, I'll make the motion for twenty thousand dollars, as we supported them for twenty last year, to the same...
You have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Uh, roll call vote.
Mayor Covington.
Aye.
Kevin Fleetwood.
Aye.
Diana McKenzie.
Aye.
Daryl Holley.
Aye.
Jamie Kay.
Nay.
Four to one. Passed, twenty thousand. Uh, EDC, uh, sixty thousand comes out of the end of the... Any discussion?
Just a, a comment, I guess, in, with EDC is, I mean, I think this is an organization that, uh, can do a lot for our community, but one thing I think that's missing is, is, is working on the, the median income of our community and our, I, I don't think there's been any, any kind of a substantial rise in the median income. We, we talk about generating jobs, but I'd like to see that be a huge focus for the upcoming years, and, um, and, and I, I will support it, but if I don't feel like we're making the efforts towards doing those things, I, I don't know if I can continue supporting it in that manner. Just my personal opinion, I, I'd like to see a focus on how do we drive that median income level and raising that median income? And I, I don't think it's happening right now. My comment.
Any other comments?
I'm gonna echo some of Jamie's same thoughts, um, we have a lot of new jobs shown here, uh, since April 2011. I don't know the statistics, but I'd assume right now that a lot of those might be estate-ary positions, instead of full-time employers. We have a community that has an extremely high number of students at our school system, that are on free or reduced lunches, and, uh, it's something talking about, we're trying to address.
The media said I had been with EDC, they had talked about, you know, raising people's salaries, uh, trying to find better jobs, uh, to bring in the community and help the community that way. I think we're right here at that pass, where I think that if we remember right, Honda, when they first came in, we thought everything was gonna start moving. I think we're gonna start doing something here soon, uh, because it seems like that was the cycle that I'm hearing from the other communities, uh, that, you know, each ten years is when it starts moving around and starting to grow, uh, all the time. I, I think it's a plus that we also have on the build a new vehicle, along with the other vehicle, and I think that's a very good policy, a good sign. Uh, so, I, I would like to see EDC to receive the money, and like you said, kinda, let's see what happens, and let's keep a good eye on it. That's okay if you have some questions. So I, I agree with you guys, we need to make sure we're kinda watching, with me and my first timer out, I kinda wanna see this project kick on. So, if, if there are motions on it, or we need more discussion out here.
I'll make the motion, sixty thousand.
You have a second?
One second.
Okay. Uh, roll call vote.
Mayor Covington.
Aye.
Kevin Fleetwood.
Aye.
Diana McKenzie.
Aye.
Daryl Holley.
Yes.
Jamie Kay.
Aye.
Okay. EDC will receive sixty thousand. Uh, Learning Center, uh, they're asking for fifteen thousand, uh, at the, at the school there.
Just kinda tackle this last thought, I mean, I think this is one thing that can truly help drive the median income in our community, and, you know, if we educate people and provide a tool where they can get educated.
I, I would be in favor of supporting that. I'll, I'll make a motion that we support for fifteen thousand.
I'll second.
Okay. Uh, roll call vote.
Mayor Covington.
Aye.
Kevin Fleetwood.
Aye.
Diana McKenzie.
Aye.
Daryl Holley.
Aye.
Jamie Kay.
Aye.
Okay, passed. Uh, Learning Center will receive fifteen thousand out of the end of the... Uh, Main Street Greensburg, thirty thousand. It is also made, comes out of head, it's on air.
Wendy's done a great job, uh, with Main Street. See a lot of good things happening, revitalization of downtown. I'm in support of the thirty thousand dollars, and I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'd just like to add that there's, uh, a couple new stores going in downtown, you know, the past couple years, there's been, uh, a lot of joy in it, so...
I agree.
It's kinda nice to see.
Right.
Downtown, you know.
Awesome.
I'll second.
Okay. We're gonna give it thirty thousand to Main Street, is the motion. Roll call vote.
Mayor Covington.
Aye.
Kevin Fleetwood.
Aye.
Diana McKenzie.
Aye.
Daryl Holley.
Aye.
Jamie Kay.
Aye.
Okay. And Bread Alive, uh, is asking for fifteen thousand, uh, that come out of the Riverboat Fund. Another good organization, uh, other than comments?
You know, two years ago, we gave them five thousand, and last year, we gave them seventy-five hundred. Just some of those things. The other comment I would make is, you know, I think they're struggling with how to do their budget, and how to, how to manage what they've got. I mean, that comment that they were running on faith really concerns me, you know. Are you gonna throw money into something that's not even gonna be able to sustain itself, or, I, I just have real concerns with that comment. It, it stuck in my head.
Well, uh, you have a comment I have, and I know that they had, you know, that they were requested to do more, or whatever, and I know that they have brought in different, uh, their, other organizations, or, you know, they've took, they're taking stock in the people that are coming in, and they're sitting down with them, and they're talking with them, and they're finding out what their issues are, and where they're needing help, and then they're bringing people in to, uh, to help those people, you know, give them a direction at some time. And to me, that's, that's a true outreach. So, I was, they, they said that they, you know, served four hundred and fifty-one meals a morning. That's a little disheartening to me, you know, why do we have four hundred, you know, fifty-one people that are hungry in our city? It's kinda, kinda disheartening, but I think that they're, um, they're a really good bunch of people running a, an organization, and, and I think it's something that you never know if it's gonna be there from one year to the next. So, whether or not it would, I mean, they did ask for five thousand less than what they'd asked for last year.
You know, a couple things, always, they, they've not even considered going to the county to ask the county for anybody, or even trying to split some of that burden with the county. It, it wasn't even a consideration. And then the other concern is, they're, they're struggling to help themselves in a way, because they say, "Hey, we've got somebody competent to write grants, but, you know, we're gonna spend more time in the kitchen." I think maybe you spend more time finding somebody else that can help in the kitchen while you write your grants, or things like that, to try to help yourself, to help your organization, because that's how you're gonna sustain yourself moving forward, versus how are we gonna manage through today? If you're looking at the big picture, how do I sustain this organization over a year, or over the next five years, versus how are we gonna get through today? And you've gotta start stepping back, looking at it, managing it from the big picture, and based on what they presented to us, they're not doing that. You know, unfortunately, we have people that do take advantage of these type of organizations, people who don't look at, stay at home and fix their own supper, but, uh, I, the one thing that impressed me about the group, I will say, and I forget which one in the group said it, uh... was we have guidelines, we scrutinize people, we know the ones that really need help and we're there to help them. And I echo what I have said, I think it's a good organization and I, I would hate to see Greensburg without the Redalife organization.
Out of all the nonprofits, new directions of Redalife to them, which means quite a provided work or service that they invest. If your people are hungry or if their, if their safety is compromised, they're not going to be as productive, they're not going to be as able to do what people ought to be able to raise their standards. What, what, I, you know, I've served as chair of two nonprofits, I know what it's like to struggle to raise money and know what it's like to struggle to find volunteers. Darryl and I work on the Coffee Center Board together. We understand how difficult it is even to collaborate and strive for that and it's but it's not, it's not an easy thing to get done. The other thing that really impressed me about their budget though was they only, they only spend about fifty-eight percent on salaries. And when you look at everybody else, they're spending about seventy-five, eighty percent on the war on salaries. They're actually putting more money towards their mission than towards the community. And I was talking to Karen Higgins about them after the meeting and I had asked her during the meeting, do you ever turn people away from food? She says, no, we always have food. And I was talking to her later on, she says, well, we're only open three days a week. She said, we had additional resources, we could be open five or six days. And so I would be willing to put fifteen thousand dollars in.
So we have a motion on floor. Second?
Second.
Have a second. So what we're going is Redalife, donation of fifteen thousand to the Out of the River Boat Fund. Roll call vote.
Karen Covington.
Aye.
Kevin Fleetwood.
Aye.
Ryan McKenzie.
Aye.
Darryl Holden.
Yes.
Jamie Kay.
Aye.
Four to one fifteen. So we're done with that section. All right, full business. Thank you. Okay. Darren, Darren Murco. He's going to talk about the new Flat Rock river surface water plant.
I get to watch this movie again.
Unfortunately, for those of you at the board of works, you get to see the same thing. I did change the cover.
The, the, he's going to have to be talking about the projects that we have going on down the water, that Flat Rock River.
Good evening, everyone. What we're here to talk to you about is the new Flat Rock Surface Water Intake Project. Kind of give you a little background, talked a few times about Honda and I. Back in two thousand and six, when Honda announced they were coming to town, one of the tasks that we were given with the city was to evaluate and study the impacts to the infrastructure on the water and wastewater side. And out of those studies, several projects were identified as needing upgrades in order to meet the new additional demand of Honda as well as future. And part of the funding process required the city to not only look at the immediate needs, but to look at the future needs for like a twenty-year study period. And one of the projects that was identified as a future project, not immediate need, but a future project, was this new Surface Water Intake Project. That's kind of the background of where it started from. What we're talking about is the source supply for your water distribution or your water system. Greensburg uses both wells and surface water, surface water being anything that comes out of the river, lakes or reservoirs. So that's kind of what we're talking about. We're talking about, in this case, the surface water. And I do have a couple of handouts in front of you there. And unfortunately, for some reason, when I scan this in and going from my screen to that screen, it doesn't show up as clear. So you might want to look at your handouts as well. And this is kind of the site. This is, it's an existing site, the original intake still in service and will continue to be in service. I believe it was built sometime in the mid-fifties. It's located, if you're familiar with it, if you go up Old Four Twenty-One, it's about eight miles from town. It's right before you get to St. Over, so you may have seen it if you go that way. But what we got here, I'll kind of walk you through how the water gets from the river to, to the pumping station, which pumps it back toward down for treatment. This, this is the new intake structure, the new intake screens. You got some piping here. This square here represents the low lift pump station. And then it's pumped up the hill along this piping to the circular tank, which is a clarifier or settling tank. Basically what it is, it's just a way of letting the water set for a period of time, let the heavy solids settle to the bottom. Clean water goes over the top. From there, it gravies into this structure here, which is a new lit, new surface pump station. And then that takes it and pumps it into this line here, which is a twenty-four inch raw water main, which then pumps it either to the Upland Reservoir or to the Surface Water Treatment Plant here in town. So that's kind of the process of the water. You got over here, you've got some side streams, this is an existing storage basin or lagoon. Basically that's the salts that come out of this tank are pumped here and stored and de-water, somewhat de-watered and that's where they're stored. It doesn't show up very well in here, but you have an existing intake which is located roughly right here. And you've got an existing pump station here and you've got another pump station here. So basically this project is basically mimicking what you have now and double your capacity. So they're independent processes. The only connection point is, is the raw water going into town. So that's kind of the basic water one-on-one, if you want to say. What we've done in the past, if you've been to any water board meetings, about three or four months ago, people were getting tired of being sitting up here and just talking about the statistics and that sort of thing and how the construction going. So we have a bunch of construction photos, so I started explaining construction by showing a bunch of photos. So that's what we're going to do here, so it won't be me talking too much. And hopefully you'll get a more of an idea as, as to the size and, and the project itself.
Darren, how close is the new intake to the bridge?
New intake to the bridge is probably, it's all on that site. The site actually borders the bridge. Let's go back here. It's hard to see, but this is old Four Twenty-One here. And the river is here and it goes up around like this, it crosses about right over here, a couple of hundred feet. And there's a low head dam right there on the river, right by the bridge, if you look down there. And that low head dam, what that does is that pools this area here of the river, so that's where you pull, that's where you're pulling water. So the low head dam, it's roughly about a five or six foot high dam in the river. And that's what holds that back. It creates this, I want to say a wide spot in the river for us to pull water out of. So it's real close and you can see it, the, the bridge. I don't know if I have a photo shows that or not. What we're looking at here is the new intake. This is a start, early in the process. These are called H pilings. They're, that do two purposes. Ultimately, they're there to protect the screens for many debris that floats down the river, logs and that sort of thing. This river, you don't have a lot of debris, but when it does, you have heavy rains and stuff, you do, you do get some there. So that's protective screens. It also will serve during construction as a way to hold the water back and give him a dry hole to work in. And here you can start to see, they've, they've got the hole dried up and they've got more H pilings and they've got some metal sheets in there to support and hold back the water. They've got a pump down in the corner that's keeping the hole dry as they, as they work. Here is the head wall that, you know, eventually will be, that will hold the bank back. I've got two screens on the other side of head wall, we'll see in a minute. These are the piping and valves supporting that. And it will gravity flow from these screens toward a pump station. There they're pouring the top cap. And here you can see the piping for the screens. Here is, here is one of the passive screens. Basically, it's about six foot diameter, twenty inch diameter tube with perforated or holes in it that allows the water to go into it. And that's what you pull the water in. These things are designed to have, they have what they call an air blast system with them so that every, on an hour, there'll be a big blast of air come out and will push any debris that's collected on the screens to clear it out so you don't get any clogging. When you start pulling in water like that, what you don't want to do is have to pull that debris into your pump station and then you end up having to pump that and deal with that debris. So the idea is to keep it on the outside of the screen. And the screen slots are designed to, rather than pass things through, hold it onto the screen until you blast it off. And then they're, they're setting the screens, you see the two screens right here. And at this point, this was about end of October, there hasn't been a lot of work done. They, they really want to get this ahead of schedule and they had, it wasn't real wet and they had, they were able to work in the river really well. So once they get processed and they start using it, they'll come back and they'll pull out the plate in here, which will allow the water back next to the screens and that's how they'll do that. And now we'll go on to the low lift pump station, which is just upstream from that. Here's a shot of the site prior to starting excavation. And here you can start to see the excavation. They started digging it. I will note that most of the site is rock. Basically, anywhere you dig, anywhere from eighteen inches to two, two and a half, three feet down, you'll hit rock. So there's a lot of rock with this project and we'll talk a little bit more how that played in. Okay, here, start to see the, the final excavation shot and you can kind of see, this is that kind of the outline of the, the pump station itself. I think they're roughly, this is about thirty-two feet deep. And here, the rebar's been set for the slab foundation, they're, they're actually pouring concrete for that structure there. At this shot, you start to see how the depth of the hole they've got. Again, you can see in walls, the intake screens are right back here, we just looked at. There'll be a piping between the two that's connecting those two structures. Right there, they're, they've got the inside forms, they're getting ready to set it, start setting the, it's a rebar for the walls. And there's the rebar being set for the walls. The walls, the slab is about two foot, eight inches and the walls are two foot thick. There's about half the concrete on job is actually in this small structure. In this structure here, because of the height and the depth of the structure, they had to, they had to put the concrete two pores. So they're pouring concrete up to this level and then they'll pour the rest of it in another pore. And there's the, the excavation, the pipe installation that connects that back to the screens. And now we move on to the circular clarifier, it's a seventy foot diameter clarifier, this is the excavation. Again, you can see that there's very little, you know, very little topsoil, it's almost all rock at this point, so. There they excavated out and they've got the slab ready. There's a piping that's in the center of the tank that goes out this way, you can kind of see where that excavation was. And there's a, they're starting to get the rebar replaced for the slab and they're placing concrete in this corner and have worked their way around. That's probably the biggest pore they actually did at one time on the job. I don't remember the, the volume, but. Here they are setting the reinforcing steel for the walls. Well, there's anything, I can see the iron workers hanging on as they're tying the steel. That was back, that's back in October fifteenth of this past year. There's one of the wall, there's one cor, one section of the wall poured. They, they poured it, they divided up the tank in the, in the fours, they poured it, uh, four different pours. There they're setting the center collecting mechanism for the clarifier. Here at the board of works, this is the road, or the bearing that Jeff has to replace on his clarifiers at the wastewater plant. And there's the sludge collection. What this thing does is it just constantly spends a pretty slow rate. There'll be some squeaky, squeaky things on here, which will direct the sludge back to the center hopper. And then it goes out, it's, it screens out of the tank. And then the clear water will come up to the top here and you can see it goes over this, this, this weir here. So that's where, and it goes back toward the, the next pump station. And this is the excavation for that old service pump station. Again, you can see pretty much all the excavation required them to use rock hoes and hammers to, to get it out. They did not have to blast any. That was probably a good saving thing because of the existing structures surrounding blasting would have been a little more difficult. Uh, here they're setting the bottom slab again for that, that pump station. Here they're setting the walls, starting to that, you can kind of see the, how close the two tanks are. This is a clarifier tank and this, that's the new pump station there. There's a wet well for that pump station. And then there was an additional area of some gray beams here on that pump station. You can start to see, it's kind of hard to see, but do you see these circular things there? Those are the locations for the, the pumps themselves. They're vertical turbine pumps that will pump the water from the wet well, from the clarifier up and then back into the raw water line. There they're pouring a concrete slab for that structure that was done Monday before Thanksgiving. Only reason I know is that shadow there, I believe it's me, I was taking a picture that night. Here we are, we're, we're making, we've got a couple of things going on. The what, the pump basins, concrete basins have been placed. And they're starting to put in the masonry structure for the superstructure on the pump station. Okay, again, you see here, the masons are still working on it, it's going up. And then after Christmas, they started putting in the roof crosses. Nothing special, it's standard, basically standard housing type construction for that. And here they are putting the inside ceiling in the pump station. Because it is a wet environment, we're going with like PVC panels that will allow them to hopefully not, that'll be rot resistant and won't have any ma, very low maintenance. And we're inside this pump station now, you see those pump basins. And they've started to set the discharge piping. You got your elbows and your keys and the blue things are, are check valves. And these are butterfly valves. And so you got basically a discharge for each of the pumps. The pumps have got a long lead time, they're scheduled to be on site, I think, the March first. So they're still a ways away from getting those set. And now on to the sludge lagoon. Again, here, all we were doing, it was an existing lagoon, we were just cleaning up the existing one a little bit and expanding it for the additional volume for the, the new facilities. And there's a final shot of the, of the sludge basin. Want a couple of things to point out more so. I see this pile here, this is probably about a third of the total pile. Probably two-thirds of it, you can't see from this photo, down over the hill. We were able to utilize the excavated, all the, the rock that was excavated out. The contractor kind of separated the stuff on top with the topsoil. That pile is still there, the good clean stone they took out, they, they put into another pile, they brought in a rock crusher. They crushed it all up and now they're able to use it as backfill. What that does is that instead of having them to pay to haul that offsite and then bring in clean crushed limestone, you would need anyway to backfill around the structures, they were able to, you know, only handle this stone once and not have to pay for it, not have all the trucking. And I'll talk in a minute about, you can see the cost savings that was a result of that. And as a result, they had plenty of stones, so what they did was they went ahead and lined the basin that wasn't lined before with stones. So hopefully that'd be a help to Rick and his maintenance items. And here's their, they did the other side as well. That's all the photos. Couple of things to point out. And I got some things on there, you can look at your sheet there. We started design in September two thousand and fourteen. The contractor came on board in June of two thousand and fifteen. Actually, that's when those proceedings. Actually, that's when those proceeds was issued. He actually started working around September of two thousand and fifteen. He's scheduled to be completed, he has until June sixteenth of two, of this year. I think he's actually ahead of schedule, the winter's been pretty good. He was able to get most of his concrete poured before Thanksgiving, which was one of his goals. It does have a, kind of give the overall treatment, I kind of touched on this earlier, but it has initial, the initial capacity prior to us doing that was three-point-six million gallons. We're going to double that or a little more than that. We're actually going to be able to pump about seven-point-eight. Page back there to the first. This, this location, the, the pump stations as well as the site was set up for one more expansion, which would take the total site to ten-point-eight MGD. You can kind of see, we've got room, we've got, we're not putting all the pumps in. We're putting four of the six here and we're putting three of the five there. And we've got room for another clarifier here as well, which would be the, the future expansion. So it, it still can be expanded. Ten-point-eight is pretty much the maximum you can get out of the Flat Rock River. We did, there was a study done to see how much you physically could pull out. Ultimately, and ten-point-eight came to be the number that you could allow. Again, DNR and a lot of the regulatory agencies, you can't anymore just pump a river dry. You have to leave enough downstream for other customers downstream. So that's kind of the limiting factor for what you can do. We'll be pointing out that Flat Rock is not, it is susceptible to drought. Flat Rock River is susceptible to drought. That, therefore, that's why you have Upland Reservoir as during drought conditions, you will utilize your reservoir storage. So that's, that's why. Ninety, I think we, we did some statistic analysis of ninety percent of the time, Flat Rock can meet the ten-point-eight. There's ten percent time that over the next, you know, a hundred years or whatever, that it can't be met. Now, you may have other options that by that point in time, you could, you may be able to expand your groundwater and make up that ten percent difference, you know?